Good morning, class. Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. It's so nice to see half of your faces this morning. I greatly appreciate all of you being here this morning, and I also want to share repeatedly how appreciative I am about all the investments and hard work you make on behalf of our students. And I think it's important from time to time that we take opportunities to check in periodically and to discuss where we are as a university and also where we're going. And I've certainly heard from a number of you some questions about our budget and enrollment, and we're going to talk about that among some other topics as well. You know, maybe all the important, most important right now is because of the uncertainty the pandemic is still providing to us. And although I think that we're at the tail end of the pandemic, I've seen the numbers. We're down about 40% of cases on campus, certainly. I think we only have a handful of folks that are sick right now. I think, Blaine, how many we got, like seven or eight? 10. So certainly one is too many, but we're certainly seeing the end of, I think, the surge from Omicron. So the big, the big topic today is the question, how can enrollment be down but cash is up? And we're going to talk a lot about that today. You're going to hear from our new AVP for strategic enrollment, Pete Lean, who's going to talk about enrollment and some strategies that we're taking to stabilize enrollment numbers moving forward. And as you know, our enrollments are down this year, and we are expecting enrollments to be down next year. If you had a chance to see the presentations that we did last week for the Board of Trustees, we discussed that, and we probably won't get to all of the detailed information like we did last week at the Finance and Audit Committee and the overall board meeting, but all those materials are available if you just go to my website. And Pete's going to talk about how aggressively we're working on mitigating the impacts of enrollment declines, but also building a very solid plan to stabilize enrollment in the coming years, and we think we have a very, a good plan to do so. We're also going to hear from Michelle Quinn, our CFO, who's going to talk about our budget and the fact that our cash reserves are the highest that they've been in over a decade. And we're going to finish the year with approximately $75 million in cash. And you know, that's, that's good news, although it's come with a lot of hard work. It's come with a lot of challenges, and there's a lot of work we have to do to ensure that we provide the resources for us to continue to be successful at the university. So why do we have so much cash? You know, part of it is the hard work we've done in the last three and a half years, the difficult decisions we've had to make even through the pandemic. We've also had a little bit of luck. We got an, I guess I would say, a surprising amount of resources from oil and gas this year of about $5 million. We also received from the federal government cash through the Relief Act of about $10 million. And we've been very vigilant on saving those monies and utilizing those to stabilize our budgets going forward. It's also happened because of the significant vacancy savings that we have, and that's not a good thing, to be frank with you. You know, we probably saved, and Michelle's going to go into this, we're probably $7 million in vacancy savings this year, maybe a little bit less. And you know, that's, that's because we've had, you know, a higher amount of turnover, and we've had, as many of you know, a difficulty in filling some of those positions, which has burdened many of you in this room with additional work. Some of you are doing the work of, of two people, maybe even more. And we need to find ways to ensure that we have a stable workforce on this campus. But I will tell you that I, I continue to be confident because of our people here and the work that we're doing. And this is a great university. And there are a lot of new people we're going to hear from today that are focused on ensuring our continued success. So, you know, let's talk about a little bit about what 2023 is going to look like next year as well and, and some, trying to kind of address some of the concerns that you have. First of all, there's going to be no across-the-board layoffs or cuts next year. We're going to have to be strategic about our resource management. When we're down, we decline in enrollment, we have to be smart about the way in which we manage our course, our courses, manage the resources that we're spending, but we don't need to make significant budget reductions with the amount of resources that we have. And some of the ways that we'll be doing that is investing in you. We did a mid-cycle salary increase. I think most of you, all of you in this room that were here, received a raise this month, and we're going to have another salary increase for July 1 as well, between 2 and 3%, to invest in our people. And there's additional ways that we're going, you're going to hear today about what we're doing to invest in our people, to ensure their continued success, but also to recruit and retain an employee base. So what I'm going to do now is I'm going to invite Michelle Quinn to talk a little bit about the budget in more detail. You're then going to hear from, from Pete Lean about enrollment. I've also brought up a number of others on the cabinet to talk about human resources, our DEI work, to talk about student affairs efforts, academic affairs and student success, and also what we're doing in advancement and fundraising and our alumni relations. And this is probably going to take about an hour. We have two hours today, so we'll start with the conversation, and then we're going to open it up for questions, and feel free to ask anything that's on your mind. And hopefully we get to all of your questions today, and if not, there's, there'll be ample opportunities beyond even today to continue the conversation. So with that, I'll ask Michelle to come up and talk a little bit about our budget.
Morning. So a lot has happened in the last four years. Better? All right, sorry. A lot has happened in the last four years. A lot has happened in people's personal lives. A lot has happened at UNC. A lot has happened nationally, and certainly a lot has happened in our financial picture. On the screen there, what you can see is comparing our fiscal year 18 results, so that would be the year ended June 30th, 2018, with our forecast for this year. So we used to talk about having a $200 million budget, and as you can see in fiscal year 18, total revenue was 199.6 million, and our expenses were just under 206 million. So in fiscal year 18, we used $6 million of cash in our operations. Those of you who have been here for a while remember that there were a number of years when our expenditures exceeded our revenue. If you jump to the other side, you can see that our forecast for this year is $205 million of cash, but I do want to make sure that we make note that that 205 million does include the one-time funds that Andy mentioned, about $10 million of federal relief funds and about $5 million of oil and gas revenues. Importantly, however, the expenditure side has gone down to $185 million. So collectively, as a campus, this is indicative of the intentional work that we have done. We, we had to go through several rounds of budget cuts, over $30 million in budget reductions. We went three years without salary increases for faculty and staff, and as many of you are very aware, we've had quite a few personnel changes over the years. This has been helpful in constraining our budget, which is important as we're wanting to live within our revenue base. The other thing that is equally important is the work that has been done to increase our revenue. So I mentioned that the 205 million includes about $15 million of one-time funds, but it also includes significantly increases in our state funding. Over the past four years, our state funding has increased by 44%. One of the things that President Feinstein has done from day one on campus was really not only to reach out to the campus, but to reach out to the other CEOs of the institutions in Colorado, have conversations in Denver with the members of the Joint Budget Committee of the Colorado Legislature, really to elevate the understanding of the need for state funding for higher education in Colorado. Many of you will know that we have long been in a situation where Colorado funding for higher education lags behind other states. That is still the case, but we have made significant progress. And as we look ahead to FY '23, I'm optimistic, and I know Andy is certainly optimistic, that we will again have double-digit percentage increases in our state funding. So that has been extremely important in building up our revenue base, even at the same time that we are making the kinds of changes that we needed to, to manage our expenditures in line with our revenue. You may also remember that we went two years without tuition increases, and then this fall, worked through and decided to increase tuition by 7%, which was a significant increase. We did that very mindfully. We know the importance of that on students. We are continuing to also significantly invest in institutional aid so that we are able to assist those students who have the highest financial need. What that means from a cash perspective, and this takes you back to 2013. Back in 2013, we had about $80 million in cash, and then, as you can see, we had about five years where there was a steady decline in cash. There's a little bit of an uptick in 2017. That was based primarily upon the sort of one-time sale of university apartments, plus some interesting timing on some state revenues. But since 2018, our cash balances have trended up year over year in spite of the pandemic, in spite of all of the challenges that we faced, in spite of the fact that we are continuing to sort of wrestle with our enrollment numbers, and Pete will be talking about that shortly. But cash in every single year since 2018 has gone up, and in this current year, it will go up again. At the top there, I kind of have blocked out in gold sort of the additional cash that is due to those one-time resources. But as you can see, even without that $15 million of one-time resources, our cash would be going up modestly this year. With that, I will turn it over to Pete to sort of talk about what enrollment is looking like for the upcoming fall.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Can we hear me, hear myself okay? I don't know if that made sense. That's not English. I apologize. So some of you have had the opportunity to meet, and others, I truly look forward to finding ways to connect and to chat about enrollment. The reality is, and many of you are aware of this, that we have seen declines in our incoming classes. We have seen declines in our overall enrollment. That is our current reality, and there are reasons for that. There are things like institutions and universities diving deeper into their admit pools. That's not unique to the state of Colorado. That's happening all across the country. You have the impact of, of the pandemic. You have the impact of increased wages across a lot of different industries where students are questioning the value of higher education. Those are all reasons why we find ourselves in the place that we are at, and the members of cabinet will probably roll their eyes as I say this again, because I continue to say it. Those are no longer excuses for the work that we're doing moving forward. And so I want to make sure that we are addressing the fact that we're going to work really hard, and we're going to work innovatively and collaboratively on the ways in which we enroll students here at UNC, and more importantly, the way in which we keep them here to graduation. And that is just as important as, as the students that we're bringing in. So as we look at our fall 2022 outlook, I want to talk about three different kind of student groups, and that's going to be our graduate numbers, where we're at with our new first-time students, as well as our transfer population. As, as some of you are aware, we've been really consistent as we look at our graduate enrollment, and, and as we look at our numbers point in time, as we look at historical trends, and we look at our projections, those numbers will continue to stay relatively consistent moving forward, if not a slight uptick in our graduate enrollment. And so the work that we're doing there is, is good work, but there are also opportunities for us to streamline the process, to find better ways to communicate with students and really connecting industry needs to our students' interests, and as, as you look at our graduate students, typically adult learners, ensuring that we're communicating that value and that we're, that we're showing that value as a part of the, the outcome of these programs that we have in our graduate and extended, extended campus. The primary focus for me coming in, and the primary focus of our admissions office is on undergraduate enrollment. That is the historical trends that we've been seeing, that we concern ourselves with as we look at Power BI. And so the numbers that you're seeing up there, I think, are important in a couple different ways. One is, yes, it highlights the fact of where we're currently at. Two, what I want to look at is, is you look at 2017 and 2018, a lot of us will go into Power BI, and we'll look at it and we'll say, oh my gosh, we're behind 1,600 admits or 1,700 admits compared to 2021. However, when you look at our historical numbers, we're actually above where we were in 2017 and 2018, and we had larger incoming classes in 2017 and 2018, and that was because of the way in which we yielded students. That is not to say that we are going to have a 32% yield coming in. If we did, I would be retiring early and finding any institution I'd want to work at, right? However, I want us to just keep that in our minds as we look at the work that we're doing, and that admit populations are not a direct indicator of success. It's the way in which we build affinity to the institution. And I'll be talking about some of the ways in which we're doing that now. And yes, we have a short runway as we look at fall 2022, but the work that we're going to do is going to continue into, into future terms, and it's going to be a part of what we're doing as a part of Lisa's work, our provost, and Students First framework. And it's really important that all of this work collectively as an institution is going to impact our ability to enroll students. And that, I just want to remind us of that work, that this is not just of enrollment and admissions, but as an institution. We recruit and we retain students together. So as we look at our projections, this was run on the 1st of February. We had 65, 17. As we look at our admitted student pool with a projected growth of 942 students, and we're looking at a projected yield rate of anywhere from 14 to 15%, and you can see the historical yield rates there, and that, those are some stark declines, right? And so we want to address that, and that comes back to value, personal communication, et cetera. Overall enrollment, as we look at current student enrollment, is going to be down 10%. And, and the reason that is, is as you can do the math on it, we are graduating larger classes, we're bringing in smaller classes, so we are projecting a 10% decline in overall enrollment. We are also projecting a smaller incoming class for fall 2022. However, as we look at our new transfer numbers, as we look at that as a part of our incoming class, the work that we have done, and we continue to do as we look at application numbers, as we look at that engagement, we, we really feel that the work we've done is very pointed in that we are going to be able to maintain where we've been at historically as we look at our transfer population. To be fair, it's, it's early for us to be projecting on transfers. Transfers, as, as many of us are probably aware, move really late, and it's a lot of how long and how much, and that's what we need to be communicating. And there's some great work being done across campus on how we're going to find better ways to engage our transfer population. So as we look at our spring 2022 yield initiatives, this is really important work, not only for the admissions team and what they are focusing on, but what we're doing collectively as an institution. I have received numerous requests of, hey, we, we are looking at our numbers, we want to be involved, and I'm genuinely excited about that. That, that to me shows that we have a ton of people who want to buy into the process, who want to be a part of, of bringing in qualified students, students who are going to find this place to be a home and really be a part of our, our UNC family, and that's exciting. So as we look at the, the, the themes as a part of this work moving forward, one is, we, we really need to identify value, and we've kind of gotten away from that. And a part of that is, is how are we identifying with students academically, socially, and financially, that this place is of value? And we have to constantly remind them of that. They're, they're 17 years old, right? So they have a hard time choosing what shoes they're going to wear in the morning, let alone deciding on where they're going to enroll for four or five years. And so they have applied here for a reason, and we have to remind them of the, of the reasons why they applied here in the first place and connect them to other people across campus, different student services, academic programs, whatever those things are, we have to really drive through value. And so that is a focus for us. We have to personalize it. A student from the Denver metro area is going to react completely different from a rural county in, in northern Colorado. The things that they value, the things that are important to them are different, and we cannot have a blanket message that goes out to all of our students in a mass text message and expect that to impact yield. That, that doesn't work. We have to personalize that outreach. The other thing is, is focusing on our, our different areas and identifying the differences. As I mentioned, Denver metro, northern Cali- Colorado, our rural communities, 41% of our admitted student pool on the 1st of February was from the Denver metro area. That's a huge population for us, and that is an opportunity for us to re-engage with students coming out of the Denver metro. We are a great place for students coming out of that area, and we just have to make sure that they know who we are and the value that we can provide educationally, right? Socially and financially, right? Those are the three main pillars we're constantly reintroducing. Finally, it's on communication. It's got to be consistent, and it's got to be early. I recognize that we are in the spring, and, and again, we have a shorter runway to impact yield. But building affinity happens the freshman, sophomore year of high school. It does not happen during a student's senior year. When we wait to the senior year to engage with students and to try to convey value, we have missed our opportunity. They are already in front of other schools. Other schools are already connecting with them, and we have a lot, we have to work a lot harder. And so we're going to start working smarter in addition to working harder. And so that starts far earlier with our freshmen, our sophomores, our, our juniors, rising seniors. We have to start early. And so the work that we're doing right now across our search is, is happening, and that's going to impact 2023 and 2024. And so we have to be clear on those next steps. Getting them to campus and engaging with you all, seeing what we have here, that's exciting, and, and we have to be excited for them. We can't be hanging in our heads. This is an awesome place, and we need to be optimistic and positive about this place that we call home, because our students see that when they come here. And so we have to convey that collectively as an institution. So finally, the things that we're doing right now from, from actual initiatives, some of which you all are participating in, a big one for us, as many of you are aware, is financial aid is incredibly important. And so our financial aid office has done an outstanding job of getting preliminary aid awards, estimated financial aid awards out to our families. Nearly, when, when these numbers were run, nearly 43% of our admitted student population had received a preliminary financial aid award. That is, that is far earlier than other schools in the state of Colorado, and that is far earlier than the national average. That's incredible work, and that's important work. What's more important is the way in which we communicate that. And so I'm really excited about the work that the team has been doing in admissions and in financial aid in that we not only have sent out preliminary aid awards to the household so that the families are seeing that award, we send an email notification to the students to check their Ursa account. If we have parent email information, they are CC'd on that communication. We are sending text messages reminding students that they have a preliminary aid award, and we are following up via phone call and/or personal email from our admissions counselors, connecting them to financial aid and talking about value, not just cost. We cannot assume that a family is going to get a preliminary aid award and then reach out to us and say, oh, hey, now I have all these questions. We have to reach out to them and start those conversations and getting them connected, and again, reintroduce value. Bear to bear, I am genuinely excited about the buy-in we've had from bear to bear. All of you, in, in many ways, have, have communicated this across your departments, across staff, across campus. So we have 35 individual postcards being written through alumni, through faculty, through our staff. When I looked at our current admit pool, that was nearly 50% of our student, admitted student pool. That's, that's impressive work, and that is personalization. I've worked with Lindsay Crum in Alumni Relations, who's done a phenomenal job of helping segment out. So they're not only personal from the fact that we are handwriting it, but they're personal because, hey, I'm from this person's hometown. I teach or I work in an academic area that the student is looking at. That is personalization. That is communicating value. Really, really important work. Regional yield events in some of the areas that I mentioned, Denver, Colorado Springs, Fort Collins, obviously Greeley, Grand Junction, we are getting out in front of people. The virtual capacity is really great. We continue to do that work, but we have to be in front of people. Visibility and presence is one of the biggest things as it, as it applies to enrollment and finding success in enrollment. We have not done a good job of that. We have to be visible and present in our communities, and the work that we're doing right now, again, will continue moving forward, but we are having those conversations one-on-one or in smaller group settings across our regional events. Genuinely excited about that work because we're, we're going to get in front of our families and again, communicate things like financial aid, value, come visit campus again, see you at destination. Those are the things that we want to be communicating. Finally, the, the last thing is we have some updated yield campaigns. I'm hoping that many of you have been able to meet Debbie Ferris, our new AVP for marketing and communications. We have had weekly meetings. We are drinking from the fire hose together, and so I haven't, I'm so thankful to have a partner that I can, that I can talk to about that. I also am excited to have a partner that, that is really creative and innovative in the way in which we are communicating and changing the way in which we are presenting that information. We have six new print pieces that'll be going out to families, three of which are going to be focusing on driving registration and attendance at our UNC destination events. Really incredible work that, that has a high impact because, again, students are seeing themselves on campus, they're not being told they should be here. We have to show, not tell. The final three pieces are things that we collectively need to do a better job of, and that is, one, what are the unique characteristics of this institution? That's a piece that is coming out. Find, find your, find your new sense of normal, right? Two, defeating the stigmas of Greeley. This is a great community, and we have to be excited about this community. We are an hour and a half from the trailheads in the national park. Give me another campus, you can do that besides the ones that we know. Right? Okay? But at the same time, we cannot be worried about what other institutions are doing. We have to do what is right for UNC. And so we have to talk about the fact that we have X number of college students within a 50-mile radius. That's exciting for students. We talk about community, it's about Greeley, yes, it's about the surrounding communities as well. So we're going to, we're going to make sure we're doing that. And the final one is, is showing our student services and our diversity resources here on campus. That is a part of who we are, something we should be proud of and should constantly be getting in front of our families and students. So we have a ton of work to do, and the reality is that, yes, we are going to see declines in enrollment, but that, that, that does not have to be our mentality moving forward. We can be positive, but we can be realistic. We're going to work hard, but we're going to work smart. And so I am genuinely excited about the team that I have, some of whom are in the room today, so get back to work. I'm kidding, all right? But we have a lot to do, we have a lot to be excited about. I look forward to hearing from you all. So I, the questions today, but the questions moving forward, I'm open to answering. So thank you, and, and go Bears.
Thank you, Pete. So Pete was kind enough to reference our Students First framework, which builds on, as I think everybody knows, the work that started years ago, at least three years ago, and honestly, I think this work has been happening for years and years at UNC. And initially, when Andy Feinstein got here, there was a launch around CESS, around Strategic Enrollment and Student Success. And I'm looking around the room, and I know many people here were part of that work. And everything that was done at that phase set the institution up for taking the, the base, as it were, to the next level. So the Students First framework fundamentally is our first university-wide strategic enrollment management structure and framework, and many of you, again, are participating already vis-à-vis our task forces that we have. I see the co-chairs in the room. I see many members of those task forces in the room. Our associate deans are leading student success efforts in our colleges. We have our advisors, who are very much an integral part of this work. And of course, we have our, our student success, our college student success committees that now are set up. So we have everybody on the academic side and in student affairs, as we will hear soon, and of course, administration and finance across the whole university, pulling in the same direction, rowing, as it were. I'm reminded, that's the correct metaphor frequently. We're rowing in the direction of strategic enrollment management, which means, and this is something that I really think is good for us all to get our heads around. The enrollment cycle fundamentally is about recruitment and admissions, as we heard from Pete Lean, retention and graduation. And our alumni then ideally feed the pipeline, and that is Strategic Enrollment Management 101, and it is a SEM framework, as it's called, that we now have in place, and that is going to help us, I think, continue to elevate our efforts and to work together to do the important work, not just to getting students here, but keeping them and helping them graduate in a timely fashion. One of the things that I also think is important for us to really understand deeply is we know who we are at UNC. We know what our values are. We know that for us to talk about student success, we must simultaneously be focused on and investing in student faculty and staff success. We know that our values around diversity, equity, and inclusion are fundamentally at the base of every, at the core of everything that we do. And we also know that we have a lot of opportunity, as Pete alluded to, to lean into reputational excellence, to raising our profile in this regard, and to stabilizing enrollments over the longer term. So that's what the Students First framework is about. And we have a lot of data now that we pulled and have been analyzing over the last several months around what's happening with regard to the student population at UNC. So as people keep saying, we're not, you know, this is not your grandmother's UNC. And the fact is, it's a very, we're in a very interesting demographic space here at UNC. Our student population, and we'll talk more about this at our Retention Summit that's coming up in April, that I'll speak to momentarily, but fundamental, the, the tag- coming up in April, that I'll speak to momentarily, but the tagline here, the takeaway, is that our student population aligns with other regionally-serving institutions in Colorado, and I name a few there on the slide. And we are fundamentally a regionally-serving destination campus. That is not something that we have necessarily had at the top of how we talk about ourselves or think about ourselves, but we need to think about this as a campus unlike a lot of these, unlike if you're on the Western Slope, Mesa is an obvious choice because it's close to home, right? It's where the population base is on the Western Slope, as an example. Metro obviously is urban-serving, so their region is fundamentally urban, et cetera. UNC is an institution that students have to choose to come to or go to from their perspective. So we have to, when we're thinking about our programs, our academic portfolio, and our value proposition, to use Pete's language, we have to be thinking about why it's worth it for a student to leave home and come here, or commute here in the case of grad programs that aren't online, for example. The key piece here is, while our demographics are similar to the other regionals that I list up there, the fact is, CU and CSU, since there was a change in admissions policy in the state, which passed in 2018 and went into effect in 2019, since the class of 2019, CU and CSU have been eating into our, or dipping into our admit pools. So while we know we're not CU, and we know we're not CSU, the fact is, we have to think about our positionality vis-à-vis students making a choice to go to either one of those or to come here, because this is probably not going to change for the foreseeable future. And I think folks know, I knew it when I was growing up in Colorado, CU fundamentally has had a very large out-of-state student population for decades. And that out-of-state population during COVID plummeted, and that also really impacted us. So we may have some bounce back eventually as CU pivots, because obviously they're going to when they can for the bottom-line impact toward admitting and recruiting more out-of-state students again. But in the meantime, and potentially going forward, we just have to think of ourselves differently and be aware that CU and CSU are competitors in a way that we may not have been thinking about in years past. I believe the opportunities that we have here are around our HSI designation, which Tobias Gluthman will speak to momentarily, and which, again, many of you are involved in this initiative. Because if we serve underrepresented minority, Pell eligible, first-gen students well, we can be in a space that is attractive to that growing, those growing demographics, and we can compete more effectively for that admit pool that I'm talking about. We have to increase our retention and graduation rates, there's no doubt about it. We really need to be focusing on, and I was just talking with colleagues here before the town hall, we need to make it part of the regular work that we do at UNC to strengthen, diversify, and really look at our academic offerings, and ensure that what we're offering is what students are actually wanting, and that is serving the regional workforce needs and the regional economic needs. Because if we don't do that, or when we don't do that, we're out of step with the other institutions. And we do have this great opportunity to build on the Students First framework, to really lean into eventually developing our first strategic enrollment management plan. Around those opportunities, people I know in this room know, and I believe across the campus have an understanding, that our retention rate is only seventy percent. That means thirty percent of the students who come, leave. So we have work to do. The president was saying something, but I couldn't hear him.
He was saying you were doing a great job.
He said I was doing a great job, thank you. You can see, since we're now aware of this in-between space of the CU and CSU versus the other regionals, it's valuable for us to understand that our retention rate, if you're a parent, or if you're a student, and you're looking at universities to make a choice, while you're looking at CU and CSU, and they may be more expensive, if you're looking at the outcomes of the students, you're going to see, for the retention rate, students have a higher chance, much higher chance of hanging around at CU and CSU than they do at UNC. And similarly, for the four-year graduation rates, while the regionals are lower than we are, CU and CSU are significantly higher. So when we talk about a value proposition, and we talk about who we are and what we're proud of, I think we all agree, we have a lot of work here to do to be more proud of how we serve our students. And that's not even to mention, although you can look at these data on our student success dashboard and our equity dashboards, the equity gaps that we have that we're also striving to eliminate. So I'm really proud of the work that's being done with academic affairs leadership, of the support of the, I'm really excited about the deans and the A-deans and the chairs and directors being on board for the efforts to reach the goals that we just recently reset. These goals are simultaneously aspirational, and I believe realistic for UNC, that we're going to lean in so that we have better retention year over year, and better four-year graduation rates year over year, and we're lowering and eventually eliminating all equity gaps. And I know it's possible, because I've worked at a university that did that before. And I've worked in a system that set ambitious goals and really put attention toward, intentionality toward those efforts. So this can be done. The other piece that I'm talking about here around academic portfolio is really fundamentally about our market positionality, about our opportunities to revitalize and refresh some of our curricula, and also fundamentally about looking at areas of decline, and where students are opting to go on our campus, but also where they're opting to go on other campuses. So we have opportunities here to be looking at our whole portfolio, to be having conversations, and again, to be making this part of our regular work, not just something we do every few years when we're worried about enrollments. This is really the work that needs to be done year over year. So just as some examples of what we've currently been working on, the board on Friday did endorse, did approve our new BS in Health Sciences, so shout out to NHS for the great work being done there, to really think about how we capture more students and how we help more students stay by offering a BS in Health Sciences that has tracks into different majors in the college. And similarly, we elevated some of our BAs, three of our BAs that currently exist in performing in visual arts, to BFAs. And in this case, this is really about building on reputational excellence and helping us attract higher and higher caliber students, and also speaking to an area of strength already that we have on the campus. We have real opportunities on this campus to add or grow some degrees that have been the fastest-growing degrees in the country, that we don't have a standalone degree. So we don't have computer science as a standalone, we don't have data science as a standalone. Computer science is in the top five fastest-growing degrees in the country and has been for a decade. So that's something we can do, and we'll need to look at how to do that appropriately, similarly with data science. I'm also really excited about the work that we're seeing in business and also in education and behavioral sciences. We have the opportunity to take programs that are well-populated with students, that are popular, I'll say, with students, that are wanted in terms of being pathways to a career, including general business degree and also including early childhood studies, and offering these both as in-person degrees, so I'm going to say traditional, as well as online degree, so that we can be thinking differently about the flexibility that we offer our students, and also our, again, positionality in the marketplace vis-à-vis what we offer, and diversifying the kind of student who would be potentially attracted to UNC because of our programmatic offerings. You all may have other ideas of what we can do or should be doing, but those are some of our future opportunities. And fundamentally, my main message for everybody here and for the whole campus is this work is made possible by all of our faculty and staff, by all of us thinking together, listening to our students, looking at our data, we have new dashboards that are going to help, are already helping us, be looking at our academic budgeting, academic program overview, student success dashboards that are helping us have immediate access to graduation, retention rates, equity gaps. We are building more of an evidence-based, database way of thinking about who we are, and sharing that information, and iterating together to make UNC better every day. So I want to say thank you for your incredible work. And I want to say that it is only made possible, the work that we do is only made possible because we all show up, we try again every day, and we do it in service to UNC, in service to our students, and in service to what we all believe, which is that public higher education in the state of Colorado is really the key to social mobility in our state, and is the key to helping our increasingly diverse student population be better and succeed and go out and help our society be better. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Marshall Parks, who's going to talk about how we are recognizing our employee, the fact that we value our employees and doing the great work, to invest in our employees. Thanks, Marshall.
Thanks, Lisa. Good morning, everybody, and I want to build on Lisa's last slide about how it's all possible because of you, and the focus of my conversation today is you. So specifically, I want to talk about how UNC is committed to you and to your success. I think Pete did a fabulous job of talking about the recruiting and retention plans we have for students, and it's become glaringly obvious over the last few years, we need to have the same kind of intentional recruiting and retention plan for you, and for the people here to support our students. Today, I'd like to talk a little bit about an initiative that we're working on to that end, working on developing a faculty and staff recruiting and retention plan. It's got kind of three main components in my initial thinking about it, three main components of retention, anyway, kind of the work-life connections and how those things feel to us. Compensation, Andy talked a little bit about, but obviously clearly an important part of our time here. And third, supporting healthy and productive working relationships. We spend a lot of time together, and we've been through a really interesting period of time in our institution and society, and I think continuing to find ways to support one another and support healthy working relationships is a critical part of a retention plan also. There's several kind of initiatives in each category, I just want to highlight a couple today as we continue this conversation. First, to support positive work-life connections, expanding our remote work policies, to move from kind of a tolerance of remote work, which is kind of the way we all started this at the beginning of the pandemic, to kind of encouraging remote work where it serves both the students and the staff. So it's a different way of viewing remote work and how it fits in at a university. Beginning in March, we have an exciting new program to help those of you who have student loan debt, we're going to work with a company called Savvy. It's, I'm really excited about, just signed the contract actually yesterday, and they'll work with our employees who have significant student loan debt to help work through the process and access the Public Employee Student Loan Forgiveness Program. The program's been in place for a little while, but there's some interesting initiatives on it this summer and fall. In addition, those of you who've tried to navigate that individually, there's about a three percent success rate from people who try to do it themselves. And when working with this company, the success rate is over seventy percent in reducing the amount that people owe, and eventually getting to the stage of forgiveness. So really excited about that initiative and anxious to have that start launching in March, and I know we have a lot of folks on campus who can really benefit from that. We're also exploring things that we've talked about for a long time, but on-campus faculty and staff housing. Met with Dr. Cedric Howard, who we're going to introduce here shortly this week, and working through ways to enhance the availability of on-campus housing for faculty and staff, especially given the tight housing market in the community and the cost. I think it's an important part of recruiting and retaining good-quality faculty and staff. And another one that we've talked about for a long time and is kind of back on the table is onsite childcare options, so we, I think, have some exciting, those of you who were at the board meeting last Friday heard some discussion, the governor's office is interested in investing in childcare on college campuses, and I think it's an exciting opportunity to partnership, looking forward to that. And we're definitely going to continue the well-received initiatives we started last summer with the reduced summer workload and the longer holiday break program. So some things we've already begun, we're going to continue. Under compensation, I think Andy mentioned the fifteen-hundred-dollar increase we had this month for all of our employees. Another thing I'm really proud of is we adjusted our minimum wage on campus to fifteen dollars for employees and fourteen dollars for students. Really proud to be at a campus that made that investment, and our custodial staff, who is amongst our lowest-paid on campus, had equivalent of an eighteen percent increase in their pay between the combination of the fifteen-dollar pay increase and the increased minimum wage. So again, an investment I'm really proud of, working in a place that takes that, that knows that that matters. And I think we'll continue to work on what a livable wage is for all of our categories of employees in UNC, given the cost of living in our community, et cetera. Also, as Andy stole my thunder, we're planning two, three percent increase this year, which is wonderful, and I'm excited about that. And I think the most important part of compensation that I think we have upcoming work to do is, those of you remember, at our board meeting in December, we had some conversation about a multi-year compensation plan to be sure that we can get our salaries to a competitive position and then keep them there. I think it requires a multi-year commitment, and in a couple of the slides we mentioned, we went a couple of years without pay increases. We've done things like that in the past, that even when we've started to make incremental progress in our work, we've slid back when we get to those years that we aren't able to fund that. So trying to find a way to integrate a multi-year compensation plan into the multi-year financial planning of the institution is, I think, the most important work we're doing on compensation moving forward to help recruit and retain the great folks. The last bucket is to support healthy and happy working relationships. We're interviewing next week to hire an Ombudsperson, which I'm excited about, to serve as a neutral resource for all our faculty and staff, to resolve workplace concerns in a safe and supportive environment. Those of you who've worked in environments that have had Ombudsperson, I think it's a really valuable role, I'm excited to add it to UNC. I think it's going to be a great resource for all of us. We're also implementing a new platform for staff evaluations, I'm excited about the cornerstones in any of the companies. So instead of all of you filling out paper forms and sending them to me, and me being buried in them every spring, we're going to go to an online system for, a platform for using those, and more importantly, on the professional administrative staff side, we're reimagining the evaluation system and the process, and really turning it into an employee success plan. And I really like to thank the folks at PASK in particular for their participation in really rethinking how we do that and making it so that it's a tool to help personal and professional development, as well as talk about career laddering and opportunities at UNC. So I think that's a really important shift and change in our approach to evaluation. I'm really excited about. And lastly, we're doing some exciting work on supervisor training. Supervisor training benefits everyone, it's the number one thing asked for by supervisors, and it's the number one thing asked for by people who are being supervised. And I think it's important, we've got some entry-level supervisor training things that we do that I think is a good start, but I think what we need is a way to support our supervisors throughout their career as they grow as supervisors and have different tools to support our supervisors as they grow. So again, that's just a quick overview of what we're working on, I think, you know, this is really important ongoing work. I encourage you to send me any ideas they have on other things we should be considering and thinking about. Again, thank you so much to the governance groups, have been really supportive and helpful in this, and look forward to having more campus conversations about ways we can support all of you and make you successful here at UNC, because that makes us all successful. And I guess at this point, I'd like to hand it off to one of the great examples, I think, of the talented new staff who've joined UNC, and so happy to have with us our vice president of student affairs, Dr. Cedric Howard.
Thank you, Marshall. Good morning, Greeley. Now, I heard from this side of the room, good morning, Greeley. I know you've been sitting for a while, so I took it upon myself to exercise a tradition that is very common in my birthplace of Georgia, it's called call and response. And so, you know, sometimes And so, you know, sometimes we have to just wake up the room by just a greeting. So we go try this again, good morning, Greeley. Excellent, now I feel the energy in the room. Thank you, you can tell I'm over at Student Affairs, huh? I want to thank everyone for the opportunity to share a couple of thoughts about what is happening within the Division of Student Affairs. I want to thank President Feinstein for giving me the opportunity to serve as the Vice President of Student Affairs. I want to thank my cabinet colleagues, my Student Affairs colleagues, and just you, my UNC family and students for the warm, supportive greeting that I've received. Yesterday, I celebrated my third month anniversary here at UNC. And I truly want to express my gratitude to each of you, because it has been a warm reception and a very welcoming environment for me coming in, in the middle of the year, so I really feel like that I'm part of the Bear family, so thank you. In support of UNC's Rowing Not Drifting 2013 Strategic Plan and the Student First Framework, the Division of Student Affairs is poised and committed to its role in serving as the leading custodial unit associated with the student experience. The Division will use a three-C service philosophy to provide a framework for supporting campus strategic initiatives. The three Cs are core, commitment, and contribution. Core, what are our core programs? We will leverage our program services and resources to serve as a shepherd of the overall student experience here at UNC. Commitment, Student Affairs is committed to enhancing UNC's academic mission through collaboration and partnership. And the third C is contribution. The Division of Student Affairs will play a critical role in contributing to the long-term sustainability here at UNC and to the greater Student Affairs profession. On the screen, the slide shows the work that is currently taking place within the Division of Student Affairs. From spring 2022 through spring 2023, the Division of Student Affairs will establish a set of divisional guiding initiatives aligned with phases two through five of Rowing Not Drifting. The overarching goal of this process is to clearly define divisional processes, strategies, structures, and assessment that will help us to demonstrate the importance of the effectiveness of our division and support our Student First Initiative. On the screen, you see two stages, two phases of our process. The first phase of development is occurring as we speak. The Division of Student Affairs is developing an effective assessment process with student learning outcomes that is linked to institutional effectiveness. We're also examining our current mission, vision, and core values, and most importantly, we're revising our current organization structure to become a division that is configured in a manner that is grounded in student success best practices. I'm really excited for the work that my colleagues in Student Affairs have done, we have three task force. The first recommendations came from the task force on last Thursday. When we talk about commitment and building a shared vision as a division, roughly about 40% of the full-time staff within the Student Affairs are actually serving in one of the three task force, so that's tremendous job from my colleagues. And I just want to say, the initial work is exceptional and very inspiring as we continue to progress throughout this development of who we will become as a division moving forward. Another update that I would like to share with you is an investment in the overall student experience here at UNC. In fall 2022, UNC will experience a significant expansion of on-campus food options in two locations. At Holmes Dining Hall, the gourmet-to-go space will be converted into a fully operational Starbucks with a full food and drink menu. I do know our students are currently searching on TikToks to get their favorite Starbucks beverage, so I prepared them accordingly. In addition, from work that is done from across campus team, the university center will add four concepts to the current offering on the ground floor. We will add Empire Pizza, Crisole Latin Kitchen Eatery, Bowlful Healthful Food Options, and a full burger bar restaurant to the ground floor, with the ability to have one or two adult beverages as appropriately aged for your consumption, and of course, after hours. So we're excited about the expansion of the food service operation within Sedexo and the partnership, and I want to thank Tobias, who has led our campus charge in partnership with Sedexo, they've done a tremendous work, the team with UNC is exceptional, so excellent job with the partnership with Sedexo so far. And the last comments that I would make to give an overview of the exceptional work that has been done within the Division of Student Affairs really has been a labor of love, I would say, because it has allowed us to examine who we are and really, and really say to ourselves, what are we doing well, and what are our opportunities for improvement? And these are the three areas of focus that we will focus on over the next 12 to 18 months. The Division of Student Affairs will pay close attention to three programmatic areas. We will expand mental health and student wellness services on our campus. We have a dynamic partnership that we're finalizing actually within the next week, so we will make an announcement, a significant announcement of those expansion within the next two or three weeks from a perspective. Secondly, we will have significant enhancement to the, in the area of career and graduate school preparation for our students. You're welcome. And then finally, one of the areas that we're focusing, will focus on is an evaluation of our campus life facility. We will conduct a comprehensive study of our campus life facilities, specifically campus housing, our student programming space, and outdoor venue space such as our student, such as our tennis courts, to ensure that all of our students' needs are being met. This is an overview of my first 90 days in working within the division. And I must say, it is a dynamic team. As you can tell, they have decided to row and not drift throughout the first 90 days, and I look forward to the work that we have ahead of us. Now, I would like to present a very close and dear friend of myself, Dr. Tobias Guzman, to present on DEI Initiative. Thank you.
Of course, leave it to your diversity, equity, and inclusion VP to buck the system and not use a podium. I wonder why my daughter is the way she is. By the way, she is a first-year student here, so watch out. Thank you so much, Cedric, excellent work in Student Affairs, and if that's your 90 days, this is also my 90 days being the Vice President for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion and having one job. In the Division of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, we have about 65 different initiatives that are occurring. I am not going to go through each one of those. Thank God, right? Because I'm going to hand it over to Ally here in a minute. But what you can do is you can take a picture, not now, because you won't listen to me, but you can take a picture, thank you, Pablo. You can take a picture of that, or you can type in each of those letters and go to the website of understanding the practices, the programs, and the policies that we are working on each day to either address or to impact this university in a different way. I have a very small but mighty team that is working on 65-plus different initiatives, and it's also partnerships with each of your offices. One partnership is obviously the University Advancement Office, in which we are able to work, I've never worked with University Advancement the way I have here, so I appreciate that, and to all the team at University Advancement. So for example, one initiative that is, that we are working on is our Hispanic-serving institution. Now, it's not an initiative, I said initiative at the beginning, but it is a way of being. And as many of you know, we are working toward a numerical threshold, and we are working at, in terms of a service threshold, and that is a little bit different than the numerical. Numerically, 25%, we will get there. But the question is, is are we there and will we get there in terms of how we serve our students? Remember, it's not Hispanic enrolling institution, because that's easy. We are a Hispanic-serving institution. And on March 23rd, all day, we have invited Dr. Gina Garcia, who is a leading scholar in this work. She is incredible. We had a meeting with her yesterday to talk about the day, and she's going to be meeting with individual groups such as University Advancement, such as Cabinet and the Deans. She will also do a large keynote session, and I will tell you, the information that she has is absolutely incredible. You will walk away with an enormous amount of ideas on how to implement being a Hispanic-serving The next thing is respectful behavior, and I hope you can see that all of this that we're talking about, each one of us ties into each other. So Marshall mentioned a little bit about a, an environment of care, and what we're talking about with respectful behavior is we probably have seen violations of a lack of respect or civility within our community. That has to stop. We have to know how to treat each other and work with each other. Now, this is no policy, but this is a practice that we are saying as an institution, this is what we value. We value the respect and care of each other, and this is how and what it looks like. That will be coming a little bit later into the spring semester. Right now, we're going around and kind of testing the language and wording of this particular statement that we will all ascribe to, subscribe to. Lastly, one item that I wanted to highlight was the promising practices for equity-minded teaching and service. Dr. McCarty and I are going around doing a little bit of a roadshow tour of this particular document that was created to help you, either faculty or staff, to use as a guide on how to be equity-minded in your teaching and your service to students. There are things in the classroom that we can do differently to make sure in service to student success. There are things in the residence halls, in the dining rooms, in our tutoring labs that we can do to make sure students are successful, and by that, I mean it's about us and changing the paradigm that we've known for such a long time, because guess what? Our students have changed. So we will, we are gaining feedback right now and making sure that that's out there for your use. And I did say lastly, but this is really the last one. Everyone else had a good amount of time, I'm going to take my time. Remember, we have a little over 60 positions advertised, and we have an opportunity that I keep hearing not too many people know about, but remember that we have, individual search committees have the opportunity to spend $500 for paid services for advertising. And the other piece is that we also have a contract that was signed with Circa, which advertises our positions to over 1,500 community organizations. We don't just advertise in HigherEdJobs.com or The Chronicle, these are extremely diverse places, and I hope to see that you are utilizing this. If not, we will continue to get the same results. And at this point, if we have over 60 positions that we are advertising for right now, we have an opportunity to choose a faculty and staff that is diverse for our campus. All right, that's it. I'm going to introduce to you my esteemed colleague, Ally StegHaskett.
I'm going to stand behind the podium because my shoes are probably louder than I am, so I better just stay still. You notice, we couldn't decide what order to go in, so we decided to go from tallest to shortest there at the end, so you made it easy, Cedric, to know where to go. University Advancement has a really neat opportunity. Our role is to shine a light on all of the incredible work that you're all doing and help support that by communicating it, by inviting other people to be involved in it, and by helping solicit gifts that help us sustain it. The key initiatives that we're working on are linked most specifically to nine and 10 in the Strategic Plan, but we get to support all of them in the way we advocate and raise money and communicate about it. I want to talk a little bit about a couple of the key things that we're working on right now, but before I do, I also want to introduce a new colleague that we have in Advancement. Pete mentioned that Debbie Ferris recently joined the university as our ADP for marketing and communication, she's back there in the corner. Debbie joined us just last month, so she doesn't, she's not even in the 90-day club yet, but soon enough, there are probably days it feels like it, as she and Pete are both drinking from that fire hose. I did the math really quickly, Cedric, by the way, I'm in my 202nd month at UNC, it turns out, so I think I did the math right, I don't know, I'll ask Oscar for help later to make sure. But Debbie comes to us from Case Western, I'm really excited to have her expertise and her leadership on the team, she joins a really strong group of marketing and communication professionals, and it'll be really wonderful to have her partnering with everyone. One of the key things that we're working on is a comprehensive brand audit. So at the end of last semester, we went under contract with Reagan Communications and Lucas Narratives. Reagan Communications is a nationwide leader in communication, and Lucas Narratives is an organization run by a UNC alumna, Kathy Lucas, so go Bears, we love when we can use the expertise of a bear. And Kathy was really instrumental, for those of you that have been in Colorado a while, in really transforming the marketing and the brand awareness of MSU Denver. And so those of us who have seen that, have how that's happened, we can appreciate even more knowing that it was led by a bear. And so Kathy and the folks with Reagan Communications will be helping us. That brand audit will allow us to do a multi-channel review of all of UNC's messages, to make sure that we're really clarifying and crystallizing those to support all of the great work and opportunities that my colleagues talked about. Those of you that have been on campus might remember just a few years ago, when we did some work to really kind of, again, crystallize and renew our visual identity, you see the really strong UNC and the new Bear head, it's proud and it's bold, and we need to make sure that our messages reflect that as well. And so that work will be done, right now, they're in the discovery phase, so they're doing a lot of research, reviewing just about everything we've ever said publicly, whether in print, watching videos of events like this, looking at our admissions materials, our alumni communication, and really doing an audit of those. They'll also, in the spring semester, be opportunities for all of you to be involved in that. We'll have focus groups, we'll have surveys, and we'll ask all faculty, staff, students, prospective students, and alumni to give feedback about what resonates with you, where you think those messages really land, and make sure that we're selecting kind of a small group of key messages that are sticky in the way we want them to be. So I hope that you'll watch for that after the spring break time and participate, it is really important. It is really important that this process be collaborative and involve feedback from everyone, so please encourage your colleagues, your students, and everyone else to also participate in that. In addition to our work in the brand audit, which of course will lead to messages we use in all of our materials and communications, we're also doing a lot of work in fundraising. In the first 18 months of the Rowing Not Drifting Plan, we raised a record $23 million in that 18-month period in support of you, our students, the programs, and all of those things. Can I get a little bit of applause for that? $23 million is a huge investment, and when you think about the time in which that happened, that's from July 1st of 2020 until December of 2021, a time that the world was unsure about what was going on, our donors were unsure about what was happening in their own lives, dealing with all of the things that each of us were dealing with personally, and still making incredible investments in the University of Northern Colorado and our people. A few examples of that philanthropy, because it sometimes does go unseen, is later this month, we'll open the Empower Center, a totally donor-funded sport and exercise facility, weight training for our athletic programs. It was built with four, a $4 million of, of all private gifts, no university funds. Additionally, donors have supported programs like the UNC Cancer Rehabilitation Institute, faculty positions like the McConnell Chair in the College of Business, and scholarships for students, many, many of them, too many to name, but specifically a few in partnership with Tobias and our Diversity Equity and Inclusion Programs, to create a new scholarship with a quarter-million-dollar investment from donors out of California for Black and African-American students, and another for our GLBT students. I guess we have a little work to do on that one still, Stephen, don't we? But we're so close. In alumni and community engagement, we've also continued to work with our alumni, again in a time where engagement with any kind of community was difficult, but Lindsay Crum and her team have done really great work to pivot our alumni relations programs, to change from things like in-person events, when those weren't possible, to asking our alumni to lean into career support of other UNC alumni, but also that of our students, partnering with our career services offices, to continue programs like Success Looks Like Me, that invites our, our alumni to come back and help our students think about what their careers might be, and remind them that we have a network of 150,000 examples that a UNC education works, and that they have opportunities to activate that network upon graduation. That work will continue, and later this semester, there'll be other opportunities for us to engage folks. One that I have to plug when I have a, a group is that Bears Give Back Day is April 14th. It's a day that's done in partnership with our annual giving team and many of you from across the campus, inviting people not only to give, but by giving, to be involved in the programs of the university. And I know that that, that work is supported largely by many, many of you, and so I hope that you will both give and encourage others to do the same to programs that matter to you on April 14th. One last thing, because I know I'm the only thing standing between you and an opportunity to ask questions of everyone, is that in addition to the fundraising work that's happened, we are planning and underway with a comprehensive capital campaign, which is a big undertaking and one that has taken an incredible amount of work. In this, in the fall semester, our deans and academic leaders came together to think about all of the new and existing opportunities that exist, to invite our donors to get involved and support our programs, both existing and new. In the spring semester, our team has been working very closely with Dr. Howard and Dr. Guzman, and also our athletic director, Darren Dunn, to do the same for those parts of campus. As the spring semester continues, we'll work to both refine and also knit together all of those opportunities, as well as things like the College of Osteopathic Medicine, to have an entire suite of opportunities for our alumni and donors and friends to really help move the university forward in our Rowing Not Drifting work, so that in 2030, we are exactly where we've said we want to be, and we recognize that it is in large part because of the contributions of the work of our team on campus, but also those who support us from afar. So since Cedric did get us so good at that call and response, how about a once a bear? And with that, I'll turn it back to Andy.
Thank you, Ally. Thank you. I want to thank, I want to thank all of our leadership team for their presentations today, and I want you to notice that there's, there's a theme here in all of these presentations, and it really ties directly back to the Rowing Not Drifting 2030 strategic plan that we're working on. And we're kind of coming to the conclusion of Phase 1, and we're going to be starting the work in Phase 2 here in the coming weeks. In fact, we'll be sending out a survey either later this month or early March to solicit input on what Phase 2 will be, and we're going to be holding a town hall also in April, where we'll discuss with faculty, staff, and students, feedback on the next steps. And then last, we'll be presenting at the end of the semester, or maybe in the early in the fall, the outcomes of what we were actually able to do. And you've heard some of this today, but there's, there's much, much more in, in the work there. So before I open it up for, for questions, I just want to, just talk about a couple takeaways, because I know that, you know, the questions that I heard were about budget, about enrollment, and then also about effort. So what I want you to, to hear, and you did, I believe, is that we don't have a fiscal cliff, we don't have a budget problem on this campus. Now, we have to invest appropriately and smartly in our future, but going back to when I arrived in 2018, and we had a $10 million structural deficit, and if you put up that slide on the, on the screen, you would see, we had declining revenues, we had declining, we had declining cash reserves. That is not the case anymore. We have been investing, and we have actually been generating cash for the last three and a half years, and I think we can utilize those resources to invest in our future and address the second thing that we came to talk about, which is our enrollment. And there is work to be done in enrollment, but I also know that we've got good people in place, we've got strategies that we're implementing, and we have ideas of how to address this as we come out of the pandemic. So with all of your help and the support of this campus, we will also address this, much like we addressed, addressed our cash and our budget challenges we had when I first arrived. So with that, I'm going to stop the conversation, the discussions, the presentations from the leadership team and turn it over to you to ask any questions that you have, either of me or, or those in the audience. I know who we're going to start with, which is Tradition. Tradition. So someone may have a microphone.
Thank you. Lynn Allen, Communication Studies. My question goes to recruitment. How do you create affinity for an experience one has never had?
It's a great question. So I think it's, it's a matter of showing and, and being able to tell the story, and as Ally just got done saying, we have 150 different examples of that, and, and really finding the stories that relate to our different students. And so it cannot be just the one student that we always constantly go to as, as a part of our storytelling. And so when we look at a build, building affinity, that, that already happens here, but it's not maybe capturing it. We have athletic camps on campus. That's building affinity to the institution. Going to theater performances or musical performances, like I did last week with my wife, that's building affinity. I've never had an experience here, and I'm doing that slowly but surely. And so it's little things that we engage our community in, and not focusing on the recruitment side of it, but on the relational side of it. And when you can build on the relational side of it, you're naturally going to build affinity to the institution, and I think that's really important, that we are finding ways to support our different communities through, through campus, and that's sometimes going to them, but more importantly, getting them to come here and see themselves on campus. Funding buses, providing free tickets to performances, athletic events, et cetera. The student experience that Cedric has talked about is really important. It's, it's a key component to, to making a decision to join an institution. There are plenty of institutions that have solid academic programs or great scholarships, but the experience in where a student feels comfortable, safe, and connected, in my mind and in my experiences, is the biggest component of where they decide to go. And the earlier we can show them that they belong here and they have a space, and that they're going to have fun, and they're going to feel connected, the better we are going to find affinity and then yield in an enrollment across the board. So I hope that, I hope that answers your question.
Pete, I might add just one more thing to that, and, and that is that UNC has an advantage that no other university in the state of Colorado has, and that is that we have educators teaching in every county of the state, and we can lean in and rely on our alumni relations colleagues to make sure that our alumni know, we need them to be our advocates too. We want them to be proud in the classroom. We send them penance and swag anytime they ask, because they can help build that affinity, because they are already trusted partners and mentors of students who are thinking about college, and there's a real opportunity for us to continue to engage them and make sure that they're proud of their experience, so that they can help build that affinity as well for us.
I wrote my question down because I didn't want to get it wrong, but this goes to both recruitment and the student's first framework. And my question is, myself, as a first-generation graduate of this institution who launched his career from my UNC education, as a member of the alumni relation staff who puts, who gets to see alumni career success every day, and as a member of the graduation and retention task force serving UNC, I have the following question. As a regionally-serving institution that is number one on the social mobility index for our graduates, and with the knowledge and the data that shows that our largely first-generation student base comes to UNC to find career opportunity, why have we not highlighted the specific value proposition in our recruitment and enrollment efforts? And why aren't we?
Because we like to work really hard. No, so I think that's, it's a really great question, it's a valid question, and, and honestly, within the first week that Debbie was on campus, and we were talking about this, again, building affinity, showing students, what, what are we talking about when it comes to outcome? What, what are the things that are unique to UNC? And you just highlighted that. Debbie actually shared that information with me, and we were both looking at it and saying, how are we not getting this in front of our students, and, and how do we change that? And that's, that's an, that's absolutely something that we're going to look at doing, because as we look at the shifts in demographics, and Lisa spoke to this, we're seeing huge shifts in demographics. First-generation, underrepresented student populations, we have to be able to convey as a part of our value propositioning, social mobility. And we have to do that through examples of students who are elevating themselves and their families, and they don't have to be Nobel Peace Prize winners. The summary that you gave of the work that you're doing currently right now, because of your educational experiences, is exactly what we need to be showing our students when they come to campus, in our print materials, in videos, in digital marketing. That's exactly what we need to be highlighting, and we will be doing moving forward. And so I hope that, that addresses it, but I also want Lisa to be able to speak.
Also, maybe Ally could talk a little bit about how the brand audit ties into, you know, clarifying the way in which we portray our institution with, with potential students.
Absolutely. Chris, question asked like a true advancement person, so I like it. And also, who doesn't see Chris Garcia and just want to do this? Sorry, Chris, I can't help it. He's a star. The brand audit is definitely an important way that we clarify the most important messages. And Chris, you hit on social mobility, and UNC being number one in the state is one of our most important messages. And we'll let the brand audit play out, and we'll get the data, but it has to be. And the way we support that, because everything we say, we have to be able to support with facts. The way we support that is by talking about the career success of our alumni, because like I said earlier, they are our examples. They're not people that go away into the world and we forget about, they're the evidence that UNC education works. And it doesn't just work for your first job, it works for your entire career, and I think it's absolutely critical. I'm, I'm confident that the brand audit will, will show that that's important. Kathy, the woman I mentioned who's kind of leading that work for us, has already discussed it a bit with us.
Lisa, do you want to add something to that as well?
No, I just appreciate that we're building a knowledge on campus about our positionality, because honestly, without that, it doesn't matter what marketing we have if we all don't have an, a deep understanding of who we are, the students we serve, the niche that we occupy. But I will also say again, we have to do better on our graduation and retention rates and eliminating our equity gaps, because you can have all the marketing in the world, and you can have great programs, but if you can't back it up with students actually being able to do the calculation and understand they have a chance, that's better than 33% to graduate in four years, that, you know, we need, we have work to do to put our money, to walk the walk, to put our money where our mouths are. So I think that is really, I love being on a campus where people want to understand who we are and how we can be a better expression of ourselves, and that's the work that I think we need to put on, we need to speed up, and we need to really do with great intentionality across the whole campus. I didn't mention, because I cut the slide out of, in, in, in the interest of time, but April 12th and 13th, we're going to put out, to save the date to the whole campus, we're going to have our retention summit, and, and it will, and we'll structure it in such a way that we hope people will be able to attend in person for 90 minutes on day one, and then sign up for breakout sessions to do some, really some hands-on work and some thinking together, but virtually, so we hope more, we'll get higher participation on day two on April 13th, around where are we as a campus, who do we serve as a campus, what are our opportunities, where are the areas we're doing a great job vis-à-vis retention and graduation and, and low or no equity gaps, and where are the areas where we really need to improve, and how can we learn from each other on the campus about how to up our retention rates? You can tell how much effort goes in from Pete's presentation and from his enthusiastic crew here at Table 1, how much effort, how much time, how much work we put into getting students here, and it really, we're ready, as a campus, to take our disparate efforts around retention and bring focus to those, I think, and build on the good work that's happening across individual departments, and perhaps in a siloed fashion in some cases, to bring that together into a greater, more synergistic strategy toward retention and graduation, which I think is to the point about social mobility fundamentally.
Just another follow-up question to you is, how do you see the, the tie-in to the portfolio of our academic programs to social mobility and the things that we need to focus on, on this campus related to that?
Yeah, so the position that we find ourselves in at UNC is not unique. I mean, the East Coast has had, you know, they've been suffering from demographic cliff. They're, they've been in survival strategy, Cedric knows, because he just came from New York, for several years, but what we are seeing, as we see the demographic shift and the population diversify and the K through 12 population shrink, is that increasingly, year over year, students in the United States are opting for programs, for academic programs, that lead to career that clearly have wraparound services, to Cedric's point about how we need to improve our career services, and that's a high priority for which we thank you. So as we look at our portfolio, our, by which I mean all of our academic programs together, we really all have to be thinking about, even if it's business and it's obvious that business is a path to a career out in our society, we really have to be thinking about how we support all of our students as they opt into our programs and as they move through them, toward, they want to know if they can get a job. And that doesn't mean that you can't be like I was in Humanities major, but it means that we have to, across all of our programs, be much more intentional, much more explicit about the skills, about the, the workforce skills that are being offered in the programs and that are built into our curriculum, our curricula, not just built into career services separately from that.
I'm Erica. I serve as the Director for Asian Pacific American Student Services and Native American Student Services. And sorry to put you on the hot spot again, but I have a reputation to maintain. I have a question in terms of how we're monitoring our equity gaps in terms of our recruitment, especially in terms of financial support for incoming class.
It's a really great question. And so we actually have a meeting scheduled to talk about financial aid leveraging and how we can better meet students' need, as we, that, that's a huge component for us. And so we need to make, we need to make sure that we're not, we're not only recognizing achievements, which I think is the traditional way in which a lot of institutions are allocating aid, right, is we really focus on merit-based awarding, and, and we really need to kind of pivot and look at new and innovative ways. And I don't have the answers. I'm not going to sit here and tell you that I have this grand plan in financial aid leveraging. That's where I rely on colleagues, and I rely on institutions across the country that I, that, that I have connections with to really identify the best, the best practices moving forward and what fits UNC. But we have to track that, and we have to be able to look at, at things like Marty told me in, in an informal conversation, that the number of Pell-eligible students over the last three years has dropped by 1,000. That's huge for us. And, and so we got to, we have to look at, why is that happening? What is the story that connects to the data? Because at the end of the day, when we talk about data, we talk about equity gaps, we talk about financial aid leveraging, the percentage of need met, we tend to forget that that impacts an individual. And we have to make sure that we have those stories to be able to find the best path moving forward for us here at UNC. And so I think as we, as we look at how we allocate aid, one of the things that form front of my mind in the work that we need to do is how we meet need. And that, that need is financially, but then we need to tie that into the overall value, and, and to Lisa's point, is walking the walk and ensuring that And to Lisa's point, is walking the walk and ensuring that we have the support services that regardless of the amount of need met, that we are still acclimating that student to campus, that we are supporting them through those things that happen. And the journey of a student, an easy answer is to say, I can't continue to be here because of affordability. At the end of the day, it could have been, I had a bad interaction with a faculty member, which I know never happens here, right? Oh, we got some laughs, that's good. All right? Or I had a bad experience with a student club or organization, or my roommate is, and I aren't getting along. It's, it's three or four different things that a student is deciding to quit and not continue on. And so financial aid is a big, is a big part of that. And so I look forward to those conversations and hearing those stories, but also working with Michelle, and Marty, Dale, and others on this campus to identify, how can we change the way in which we look at need? And how do we look at the way in which we recognize achievements? But finding the best fit for our students and who our students are, not, not who our students are looking at colleges in general.
Pete, can you add a little bit? Because I think part of Erica's question was, I mean, she talked about financial aid, but also recruitment. And I think some of the work that you're having Stephen do that really details out which schools we're recruiting out, what the demographics of those schools look like, and so on.
Yeah, so I have some, some really great teammates. Stephen, I got to stand up, I'm sorry. Stephen Doherty's a great individual that has a really unique way of looking at data and doing projections and modeling, and what does this information look like? And so we've, we've not only looked at like our top 50 feeder schools, we've also done a great job of breaking that down based on ethnicity and race, adjusted gross income, EFC, Pell eligibility, I mean, you name a variable, we are looking at it as we look at modeling and projecting. And that, that really dictates how we, how we look at recruitment. And being able to get our recruiters, our admissions counselors, out into those communities, but they have an understanding of who they're going to be in front of. And that's, that's really important. And so we know where we look at, when we, when we see schools, say, in District Six, that have the highest makeup of Hispanic, Chicano, or Latinx students in our community. We know that. We, we're not going to send me to go talk to a highly diverse high school. I am Mr. Rogers 2022, right? And so we want to make sure that we have appropriate representation in not only our stories, but in the employees that we're hiring and we're keeping here and that are out in front of our students. And so that's why we look at some of the work we're doing this spring with Adelante, being able to partner with Dr. Guzman on that, and the resources here on campus, our admission staff, in providing programming in both Spanish and English on how to pay for college, on how to look at scholarships, how to complete FAFSA. We're providing dinner for the families at no cost to them. And that's something that we're going to continue in the fall, but we're not just going to focus on the Greeley area. We're going to get out into our communities and better serve those communities. And that's how we look at, at supporting our students, you know, not only from the financial perspective, but at the end of the day, we are educators. And we need to educate all students and all families on the value of higher education, and in particular, the value of UNC and the experiences you can have here. And so that's hopefully some of the work that, that you wanted me to kind of mention, but, but also a testament to the amount of energy that goes into the data and the science, but also the art, and again, identifying the individuals that that impacts. All right? I might just stand up, because I feel like there might be another one.
Any other questions?
Getting my steps in today.
Thank you. Do we know how students make their decisions? Is there one deciding factor that could swing a student one way or the other? Is it a compilation of different variables? How, we, we look at it from our perspective here at the university, but how would a student outside contemplating their future really decide? There could be one magnetic sort of draw that just immediately grabs them and doesn't let go? Or it could be just a number of things accumulating over time?
Yeah, so there are a ton of variables in the reasons why students decide to, to go to any, any institution. Little things impact that decision. You have a rainy day on a major campus visit, that totally changes the way that a student looks at an institution. You have an academic visit scheduled, and that individual is sick and they cannot meet with you, they don't have that opportunity, they go to the next school, and they do have that academic visit, it completely shifts the way in which the student is looking at an institution. You look at financial aid, and they see themselves in a certain quadrant from a scholarship, they don't receive that scholarship, they think that they should have gotten it, that changes the way they, they feel about an institution. That's why it is incredibly important that we don't look at this as a six-month relationship. This is an 18-month to a 24-month relationship that we are building on, and that we can hopefully, even if it rains on a visit day, we can reengage that student in a very personable way. And that's, that's on us to get to know our students. And some, that's really difficult, because we have hundreds of students in some of our territories that we are trying to work with, and that we are trying to understand, what is, what is going to resonate the most with them? And that's, that's difficult, that's hard work, but it's important work. And, and when we look at the way in which we are telling students about UNC, again, I'm going to sound like a broken record, we have to continue to show students. Things like third-party testimonials. Ali mentioned, we have school, teachers in all of our counties, in a variety of schools across the state of Colorado. Well, why are they getting hired? It's one thing when a UNC alum talks about their UNC experience. It's another thing when a third party, a principal at a school that has no affiliation with UNC says, I will hire a UNC grad in education every time, because I know that they're going to get the job done. That's how we, that's how, that's how we shift that mentality of a student looking at an institution, again, is that showing mentality. And so there are so many variables, some of which we can control, some of which we cannot control. And it's on us to making sure that we are doing the best we can on those variables and the way in which we convey our messaging and our storytelling.
Hi, Pepper Mueller with the McNair Scholars Program, and I am interested a bit more in retention. And I wanted to ask, and I'm picking on you, Tobias, because you know I can, I'm sorry. What work are we doing to create a culture and change some of the culture on campus that tells our students of color that we care about them, that we are including them? And that does mean speaking to some of the racial events that have occurred on campus, to make their families, especially in trying to become an HSI, their families feel that it's safe to send their students to UNC? So students feel like they don't need to leave in order to complete their education elsewhere.
So the initial response to that is the fact that we have, individuals have to do individual work themselves. And part of that is knowing where your biases are, and what you've been socialized to think on how you work with that student is socialization at its finest. Until we look at that and you unpack that individually, is when you change. And yes, all of us in here need to change on how we look at students. Last fall, we introduced Faculty and Staff Unite programs, and those are trainings specifically for faculty and staff. The majority of the participants were staff. This semester, we have about 600 openings of training opportunities for faculty and staff. Sign up. That is the first and most influential way, is for you to look internally and adjust your worldview. Because if not, your worldview is what it is, and you will continue to teach, you will continue to serve students in the way that your worldview tells you. That's part one. There's many others. Let's have coffee.
Please.
So following up to that, I think one of the reasons that the faculty can't attend the Unite is because they are in big blocks in the middle of the day. Is there any thought of recording those so that people can watch them on their own time? So I don't know if the mess, if you want them physically there, or you just want to get the message out, which is more important. So having recordings would get the message out more.
Yeah, I'm going to call on Stephen and Dr. McCarthen. I got you, I got you, I can see, I can see. Don't stand up, no, no need. Okay, go ahead. Are you responding for me?
Actually, no. I have a, I have a question related.
Oh, well, I, I don't think we answered this question.
I mean, well, okay.
Is it connected? Is that what you're saying?
I, I think it relates, and perhaps you can answer them at the same time.
Go ahead.
So, because I think Becky brings up a good point in terms of chunks and people not being able to attend. And so I'm wondering, in, in response to that question, if you could also maybe talk about conversations that may or may not be happening around dedicated professional development time for our employees? Because it's incredibly difficult to schedule these things, as I know some folks who schedule a lot of these know, to get a time that works for everybody. And it's also sometimes, you can't, you're not going to, you're not going to cancel class for it, and you're not going to necessarily go to a meeting and other things. And so we already have responsibilities, and many campuses across the country do things where they don't have classes on Thursdays from 2:00 to 4:00, and that's dedicated time. And so how can we kind of build that in as another way to support employee development?
Great, great point. And I, that is one of the, one of the items that we have in our employee recruitment and retention plan, is, is that discussion, whether it's a particular day in a year or a particular time in a period, it's one of the things we're absolutely exploring, and it's a great idea. We have many wonderful supervisors who make time available, you know, are wonderfully supportive of professional development, but I think systemically creating something like that is definitely one of the things we're, we're peaking at as part of that. I'd love to chat with you more about your ideas on that, too.
Just to answer the Unite piece of this, so part of the conversations is incredibly important for folks to be in the room. And here's why. I'll give you a prime example. I had someone who was asking me the other day about pronouns in a gender and sexuality Unite workshop, and they were, then referenced a completely very racialized comment, right? And they said, which they did not think was problematic at all. They equated all black students to Serena Williams, right? And so then we had to have a much longer conversation about how that was racist and why that's not an appropriate thing to do in the classroom, and then get back to pronouns and understand why that's important to respect in the classroom as well, too. And that just doesn't happen when someone's sitting in front of a computer screen clicking through slides. So I, I understand, and I'm 100% on board with having dedicated time for all faculty and staff to attend these types of events, but they're just not as effective at stopping what we're hoping to stop and creating the harm in and outside of the classroom when they're not in person.
Is there, is there a way to have some of these programs at maybe different times, in the evenings or the weekends, and maybe not during office hours?
We have worked with SEDOL multiple times to do them during the day. We have tried to do them at night for faculty and staff and haven't seen attendance. So my challenge to you all is email unite@unco.edu, give me time suggestions, and we will work with SEDOL to work that out. And then the other piece of that is, please just go, like, right now, we have 10 workshops available for the rest of this semester. Go on unco.edu/unite, click on Faculty and Staff, and all of those workshops are there and open for registration. We would love to see your attendance. It's, it's, it's a little disheartening sometimes, like this week, we had a workshop that had three who had signed up for it. And so we would love to have more folks in attendance. And I, I challenge folks to, to show up and be there. We would love to have those conversations.
Just so you know, that the student workshops, in the same vein of the faculty-staff workshops, are very well-attended, and they also are on evenings. So I did one last fall and had 25 students in the evening from, you know, 7:00 to 8:30. So we do consider that, and it's also a lot more complicated.
I think one other thing I wanted to say real quick is maybe just a challenge to everybody in the room and folks who are not in the room, that this is the structure we currently have. Like, the folks who are doing Unite, this isn't their gig. This is their, their second or third thing that they're doing. And I feel like there's really a responsibility, you know, to, you know, Provost Volendorf, I appreciate your, if we're going to put our money where our mouth is, or if we're going to walk, walk the talk, this is the option that exists. So whether it's, you know, scheduling a reading day, or, you know, I don't know what the pressures of faculty are up against, but certainly for my staff colleagues, you got to make the time. I mean, this is, this is the opportunity that we have to engage in these conversations with our colleagues, to be who we say we are going to be. I mean, this is what a historically serving institution does, is faculty and staff take it upon themselves, whether they attend the Unites or not, but to look on, you know, websites and really the, the list that Tobias gave earlier, these are the opportunities that we have. And so I, I think there's a, it is incumbent upon us to take this responsibility as individuals to be better and be better for our students.
That person was first.
Lisa.
Thanks. So I want to point out that there's actually another program on campus that exists, and we've worked with the Unite program as part of our training as faculty, who are trained, and also as part of the HHMI grant that was received through the NHS program that started like four or five years ago. So there's faculty who have received training in inclusive teaching practices, but we've also worked with Unite closely, and then now it's run through SEDOL like Unite is. And we have cohorts that we, so I am a facilitator, this is my second year now doing it, and I was a part of a cohort a few years ago. So we have teaching programs and cohorts for faculty to learn about, discuss all these issues, learn about better practices. And the problem always is scheduling, and the same people showing up to these conversations again and again, and the people who need to come, not coming. So I would counter that saying everyone individually just needs to just take care of it is not actually working, because there's, I think, well, you said there were 100 and whatever, 600, or 600 slots for Unite or whatever, and we have however many opportunities through our cohort, and they didn't fill either, right? So it's scheduling, but it's also putting the, the evaluation criteria for faculty, that this is not optional. It is not, this is, hey, I got excellent in service in my tenure packet, great, does that give me tenure? No. Right? So the evaluation process does not include this, and that is also a problem.
I have my coat on, because it's cold in this room. My question is completely different, but it goes to being a staff person and possibly a faculty person in here as well. A long time ago, I heard that UNC was the place you go to, to take a step into your next job, at your next career, at your next institution. I'm a person who loves UNC. I hope there are people in here who love UNC as well. I don't want to leave UNC, but I, I wonder, and this is a question to Marshall, but to everyone, I guess, is like, what are the opportunities out there for me to be able to? And I know there's like LinkedIn Learning, but like, I had never heard of this, the new supervisor training. Like, I've, what if you're looking to become a director and you want to go to a new supervisor training? Do you have access to something like that? Or is that only for people who are currently new supervisors?
And I would say, one of, one of my sad days on campus was the day that Chris left, and one of my happy days was the day that Chris came back. So we're so glad you're here. Yeah, 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 yeah. And absolutely, I mean, I think that's, it's a key component of what we're talking about in that recruiting retention plan, is, is providing career ladder and career opportunities and support for people. Again, I think we've created, part of Rowing Not Drifting is we created, you know, a center to provide this kind of support for our employees. We've got the LinkedIn Learning components, we're building out off of, building off of that. And I think, Corinne, I'm not sure if you're here, and, but again, I think we're, we're building the foundation to, to support Chris and somebody that wants to be, to find those opportunities at UNC. Because I think, you know, at, at one point, we did take pride in the fact that we were a great training place for people. We, I mean, what wonderful experiences you get here, and I was always excited when someone like Chris got a great opportunity, someone else. But, but we need to shift that mentality, and we need to find a way to support and, and continue to grow and, and, and support our, our staff. So I'm excited about it, and I'd love to have you on one of my subcommittees, Chris, and Corinne, to, to help us think of ways to support our staff. And that's one of the things we want to do about, I know you're bored, so.
My question is for Lisa. I guess, as you're thinking about how we should be examining the academic portfolio more regularly, I agree, especially since we don't want things to just be decided very quickly or without a clear process. And so I was wondering what steps you might be taking to put into place some sort of process that includes metrics, and I'm not necessarily just talking about quantitative metrics, but also context of what we value as an institution. what we value as an institution. But how is that process being implemented?
So, thank you. And as you know, this is a work in progress because when you have an institutional context in which this is not part of our regular work, and then we look at our enrollments and we look at the trend, which is significantly downward over time, we obviously need to feel that we have a fire lit under us. And I am hearing from this conversation that there is a lot of energy on the campus, both for us to understand who our students are, why our students come or don't come. And I will say to this point that I, this morning, had a conversation with one of our faculty colleagues who said his daughter is looking at universities based on the makeup that the women wear in the sorority in which she's interested. So thank goodness Pete has a strategy to engage the human a little bit earlier because that is pretty scary for all of us. So with, but of course, students are choosing universities based on what they, what they see themselves potentially being able to study and do, and whether they see themselves to the point of inclusion. Do they see people like them? Do they see that they can be successful here? So with regard to how we look at our academic portfolio, we do this work as a regular process, but it is not something that is documented. And I agree with you that we need to be looking fundamentally, we need to be looking at long, we're areas where we have long-term decline, so single-digit enrollments in a major or a minor over an extended period, meaning not just COVID, for example, not just two years, but three or four. We all know these are areas of concern on any campus because we know that it's not viable for a student. A student doesn't have a chance to have a truly high-quality educational experience in a cohort if there is no cohort, if there are no other students in the class, if there is only one or two. So I think those are examples that are perhaps on the extreme side that are more obvious. But I do also think that knowing that we have, I like to think about higher education funding in, or budget in terms of, we have a fundamentally closed economy. So if we're growing programs because we know we have need that we haven't, demand we haven't met, and we have opportunity to grow our enrollments in X or Y space on the campus, and we have some of those on, at this university. We have areas where we have turned students away because we're understaffed. That is probably not the best enrollment strategy. It's probably giving Pete a heart attack and this whole team just almost flopped over and fainted. That's not a great strategy for an institution that's not bursting at the steams with students. So I do think that we need to have a documented process. We don't have one, I think that would be better. We have a lot of flexibility at UNC, is my experience, but also a lot of blank pages in terms of some of our processes. So what we're talking about is potentially putting up, potentially a faculty associate to the Associate Provost, to Nancy, to be working on our curriculum process so we can actually document that, which would be a step forward. And as part of that, also be looking at what we would do, how we would talk about, what the steps are with regard to documenting conversation and documenting action, and also putting up some metrics. I mean, if a major is in decline and is in single digits, a good way to approach that would be, the way I've seen it done and the way I've handled it in the past, for example, is for a master's program, if your yield is 25% right on your apps or whatever, then you, or 10% on your apps, you need 100 apps to be able to have a cohort of 10. I mean, that's just, you know, an example. But if you put up some goals for people to understand that are clear and also give people time to turn it around or to think differently about their programs. So we do need to do that. We also have a somewhat urgent need to have some strategic realignment of our budget toward areas that have potential to grow, so we're not turning students away for this cycle. I mean, we have one case right now where the faculty are, we don't have enough people to serve the number of students interested in the program, but it is a sign of excellence for us. So we do need to be shifting resources and thinking about that as an investment that all of us are making toward our future enrollment stability.
So I think we're out, out of time. I'm going to stay around for a little while longer if any of you have some more direct questions, you'd like to come up and talk with us, but I don't want to hold the entire audience up any longer. I want to thank you very much for your time, your questions, your comments, please keep them coming. Please know that we're all available to you to have additional dialogue. Thanks again and have a great day.